All set? At six thirty, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes from last meeting. If anybody has any comments or corrections, if they'd be kind enough to feed them into the record, otherwise I will look for a motion, please.
I'll approve the minutes.
Have a motion, have a second.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the minutes out of the way. Next item, public hearing, conditional use permit for planning unit development for south four to third.
Okay, so shortly you'll open up the hearing, but we did include a staff review comment. Much of it should look familiar because most of it came out just in preparation at the last meeting, and we finished a few more terms. Much of this also fell out of the agreement, conditional use permits from the previous two developments there. So, just looking for the kinds of things and the suggestions that are recommended for this new conditional use permit. There's a couple that might have been added, particularly with respect to the common areas that was new this time around, and then a few things like making sure to include, specifying that the common areas include the subdrains also that the development is responsible for.
Thank you. With that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody has anything they'd like to share, if they'd be kind enough to approach the podium and provide us your name and address.
Tony Bigelow, twelve ten Sixteenth Street Northeast. I've looked through all these conditions. They all look good to me. We are going to join the existing association out there, so all this will be in place. The only other thing, there was a performance bond under finance. I don't know, since it's not public streets, do we need a performance bond? That was one question I had.
Well, what's one of the things that was recommended, so I understand what you're saying?
Other than that, we agree with everything. Looks good.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any questions? Anyone else have anything they'd like to contribute? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. Gentlemen, your thoughts?
I think we have the majority of it out during the preliminary final discussion previously.
Good. Colin, do you think so?
Nothing.
With that said, I guess I will look for a motion.
Can I interrupt for just one second?
Please.
Can you, being a conditional use permit, there are those thirteen items that you should be considering. If you do it on a case-by-case basis, that's fine. Otherwise, in blanket, that you think everything is essentially compatible use and no issues with those items, then you can direct me to specifically address each one, just responding as such.
If there is some value in going through this list, gentlemen, I'm happy to do so. If anybody sees anything specific we need to address or discuss?
The only one that would raise any question would be number thirteen, and that's going to be in the either beholder in that neighborhood. I don't see it as, from the city perspective, that it's violation of that law. I guess compliant with all thirteen conditions.
I would agree.
Yeah, so, you know, for example, the use in a community reasonable be related to the overall needs, and we'd say the development will add to the residential units of the city, and a lot of them are just answered as compatible, so if that's okay with you, we'll respond that way in preparation of the residential protocol.
Yep, please do. So with that said, I guess I am looking for a motion.
I'll move to approve with the conditions set forth by the staff review.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Our November meeting falls on a holiday, a staff day. I forgot what the words, can't be a holiday.
Better day.
Better day, I'm sorry. Given everybody's schedule, is there another day that looks attractive on the calendar?
Do we have to move it before so we stay injunction with council, or not a big deal?
We probably should avoid Wednesday.
Well, but I meant, yeah, moving beforehand, because that cut everybody's time down to get something submitted.
If we move it up to the fourth, we run into problems with publishing, right?
I would have to get it published this week. I'd have to have it to me by Thursday, which Massey has already said that he wants to have his preliminary plat and a G D P for Blaine's Fourteenth in for the November meeting. I told him I would let him know in the morning when we decided that the November meeting would be, so I think he is pretty close to wanting to do that. He might be able to get it in this week yet then, and so far that's the only thing for sure that I know of for publication for November. So the fourth is a possibility.
Anybody have any conflicts on the fourth?
When is the election?
No, no, we don't have any.
None?
Not this year. Next year we have three, but not this year.
Political ads, there's no elections this year?
General meetings are before. Is there a better day for you, sir?
If you could make it on Tuesdays, the fifth would be a possibility. The twelfth would also be a possibility.
This works better for me than don't. Does anybody else have any conflicts on the fifth?
Nope.
Ladies, you're comfortable with the fifth? Not sign your calendars?
Need a motion on that? Yes, please. I'll move that we reschedule the November meeting to November fifth.
Have a motion, have a second. Forgive me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who got the second?
I didn't.
Okay.
Fifth item up, Casel.
Okay, well, thank you for considering this this evening. Just to give you a little bit of background, we had a nuisance complaint on a particular lot, so the letter was sent. You can see from the copy that the wrong address was included at the county level, so it was returned to us, so we sent it out with just with a revised date. Throughout this entire process, there was review of the ordinance to help guide us because we know it's next to some other lots getting close to the river and the floodway and floodplain and a lot of other considerations. So we want to deal strictly with the nuisance. As I understand it, you know, I wasn't part of the process in 2018 when there was, there was a lot of discussion about these lots down there, so what I have to go by is what the ordinance says and how we respond, but then, given the nature of the property, we felt it was best to review some of the documentation that occurred around that time. So, it looked like there was a lot of discussion about leaving it natural, and that's what we read, so we then turned to what the deed restrictions were on some of the lots, and even though there might have been discussion about the nature of the lot, none of that made it into the deed restriction. So, we reached the first letter, Mr. Casel responded with the information that I gave you. We were kind of kept reviewing it. We had the attorney take a look at it as well, along with Huntington Kegler Consulting, just to make sure we weren't missing anything. And so we did discover that there were a lot of references to nature and open areas in the ordinance and along with floodway and floodplain, specifically with the flood area management. Tells us what we can build and develop there, but nowhere in the ordinance does it tell us how to treat natural areas. So again, just with those considerations. Again, I understand there's a lot of other activity going on, so I'd really like to just keep the discussion tonight to, is it a nuisance or not, and how to respond. So in the course of all this too, I've done a lot of research, just as a side, with the Green Steps, with other cities, on mowing and natural areas, and I think there's some good suggestions that I've sent to Laura Chamberlain. I mean, because I came in late in the process, you guys might already have been there with some of that, but it was particularly an area we need to address, so, but it's not on the books yet, so that's the consideration, is where we go from here. So, that's why it's being presented. Lo and behold, the attorney mid-process, it suggested those other courses of action, and I thought we could at least send the one more letter, which is why he had two, because of the other information that had come up in between and whatnot. So, so here we are. So we're looking for you as a planning commission to help with determining if this is a nuisance or not, or if there are other things that should be considered in carrying out this particular process with this particular lot. And if you have any questions about that, you can ask me what I pulled up, or if there's some question with the information that I've included.
Nancy, any indication on how close we are to getting the new flood map?
The actual FEMA map?
Yeah.
No, but I can ask.
That was a major topic of discussion back in 2018 because Brandon was in attendance at those meetings, and they said that a new map was being worked on for the community, and they were doing some surveying and things based on that, and so, you know, not knowing where those boundaries are going to be, that makes any action or decisions on this really difficult.
Well, if I can clarify this from what I understand, so I realize that the north part of the greenway, as well as those outlots, strip of outlots, are part of the hundred year floodplain, but there's no requirement that we have to treat those as being left as natural areas that can certainly be developed upon, and no guidance that we could find from the D N R, other than in the strip waterway itself and the few banks, nothing moving out into the, you know, ten-year floodplain, hundred-year floodplain. The thing I noticed is that there had been a couple of maps kind of showing where that hundred-year floodplain was. Teresa had a map in her records that indicated that there might be a drainage easement that pretty much followed the line of the floodplain, 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 but it did not make it into the final plat. So, any deed restriction didn't, related to keeping it natural, didn't make it into the final documents, nor did this idea of a drainage easement cover pretty much those lots. So, somebody had suggested, you know, I understand there was just a lot of discussion about this, but even still, our ordinances aren't real clear on how to handle drainage easements, because we have some that should be mowed and some that can't be, and it doesn't say that anywhere either. So, would you necessarily make the assumption that even if the plat map showed a drainage easement that followed the hundred-year floodplain, should it still be mowed or not? That's kind of the difficult things we're dealing with.
Some floodplains that are notable, some are not. Is the difference true in just water and the condition of the ground? Is it geographic, are these floodplains next to residential homes? I have a very rhetorical question, you don't need to answer.
Well, I mean, one example is we had a park where Shoxville is, which was all floodplain, but was still mowed. One other comment I'll highlight, in April, in the meeting minutes, there was a comment about the lots being mowed, but in July, there was comment that they will stay as prairie grass. So, again, two different comments, and again, what less be interesting?
This might be an elementary question, but, so ultimately, somebody has complained about something going on out there, and our city staff has gone out and seen what is there, and agrees that it is not complying? Or is it just that somebody's saying there's a nuisance?
Well, if you look out there, the weeds, grasses are tall.
Yep. But are those pictures from somebody on our, on the city staff?
No.
Or just from a, from the complaint person?
Complaint.
So the question, we need to determine what needs to be mowed and what doesn't need to be mowed? And that's kind of the city staff, somebody to do with their parks department, or somebody on the other side?
And I don't think that's a decision we can determine.
Right, that's what I'm understanding. I mean, I'm, you know, us to see a couple of pictures and then try to make a recommendation is also very difficult also.
Yeah, we were pretty heavily involved in looking at this piece of property last year for a variety of things.
And that was before me, so.
Just to add another comment, as it stands right now, if the commission doesn't choose another action, then we'll have to go forward and continue with the violation as it stands, and it'll need to be mowed, or we'll abate it, which means we'll mow it and charge it back to the property owner.
Any thoughts to share?
It's a difficult one, because I can see the property owners wanting to have, particularly the outlots, probably mowed that's adjacent to their property. What they want, what they get, maybe two different things. I can also see the need for the natural grasses, you know, adjacent to the creek there, and preserve and sort of a prairie type deal, since they're not available lots anyway, anything that goes on it has to be movable or removable. So, you know, it's unfortunate that we don't have something in our ordinance that would address that. We do have comments made by Mr. Casel that he would mow and maintain it from the, let's see, April ninth meeting in 2018. Now, mow and maintain, how much of that is, do we need to consider needs to be mowed and maintained? The entire parcel, or just the outlots, or none of it?
Well, I would assume there's going to be some prairie grass back there, the closer you get to the creek.
Yep.
So at best, you're looking, trying to define a line as to, this side of the line should be mowed, this side of the line?
Is that tied to a floodplain? As Nancy pointed out, we've got a number of areas in the community that are probably in the floodplain that have had structures in them, or temporary structures in them. This is a unique situation, and I think we've identified this, at least on the south side, for a future bike trail. I don't know, I don't have an answer to this.
Just my opinion, I would be, I have no problem with taller grass in the area like that. I go, maybe the one thing that, I was looking at the picture, it may have stirred up some bit, might have been some of the noxious weeds, the taller weeds, or something like that, maybe that's something that, you know, in certain areas, you can have all the grasses, the grass can grow as tall as you want, it doesn't matter, but like iron weeds and, you know, other weeds that can grow, you know, four to five, ten feet tall, you know, those are usually something that they want removed. Is that, what is that that's sticking up all over? What kind of weed is that?
It's foxtail. There was, there was a fence back there that homeowner needed to remove because they decided not to buy that property, and foxtail grew in the line where the fence was because there was open dirt there. And the camera was actually held down really close to the ground following that, and making it look like it's a whole field, and it's all it is, a little strip. And then there was a storage shed that was on the floodplain, which had to be removed, and foxtail grew and that little box, and it's the same deal with the camera, and it looked like a whole field. Of the open area that's on lot I, most of it is like eight inches high stuff. It's mostly grasses, there's a little bit of broadleaf, I don't know what kind of small brown leaves up around, under the tree shaded areas. I did mow that foxtail lot there, so there's nothing more than eight inches on there, but are we open to a public input, or? Some of the things you've been discussing, I do got some in there on those things. I'll wait my turn.
I think my biggest concern here would be debris, stuff that shouldn't be on the lots, garbage. As far as weeds, if it was noxious weed, you know, I could see maybe forcing him to get rid of that, mow it down, but I guess my biggest concern would be any debris, garbage, that kind of thing. If there's anything like that, get it off of there. As far as the grasses, if they're natural prairie grasses, how can we say, you got to mow it, you got to get rid of it. I mean, it's an outlaw.
You're not going to eliminate it.
No.
All you're going to do is push it closer to the riverbed.
Right.
I guess that's my perspective. I haven't walked back there, so I'm just trying to think through it in between my own two years, trying to think back to the discussions from last year.
I used to go back there when I had a four-wheeler. I never saw anything out of the ordinary. I guess, like I said, my biggest thing would be garbage, debris. It should be off of there. As far as weeds, if they're not noxious, it's natural.
Any additional thoughts?
Ultimately, without somebody going out and checking what's there, you've got a neighbor who lost property against somebody who's trying to take care of new property, and now the city is trying to mediate something that maybe the city hasn't even looked at. All we're looking at is photos versus somebody from.
Nobody lost property.
Yeah, yes, they did, yeah, yeah. So, that was my first question, is there been communication between the owners to define what's going on, or is the city just being brought in to be the mediator of the situation? And I would even question, is there a situation?
I was a betting man, the city's probably put in that situation more often than anybody would be willing to do that.
Yeah, yeah. And that's why I'm just, I'm asking, doesn't the city have somebody to go out and look at it? And it's not our decision to make, but isn't that happening?
Oh, yeah, but Charlie usually goes out and looks at things, and I'm not aware of there being any debris type things, other than a suggestion, but I'm not sure it's just for this lot, but there might be some flood debris out there, so I don't know what's been cleaned up from branches and stuff.
Okay.
That's what I understand.
So has Charlie actually looked at this?
I thought so with this, but I could have it confused with several others that he's looked at, so, yeah.
And ultimately, I mean, my opinion is he should look at it with the homeowner, if all possible.
Right.
You know, to make sure that the two are looking at the same stuff, and I guess that would be.
We've got to be careful too, how far we go, because I have a neighbor, I'd like him to mow his lawn a little more often, but I can't force him to, you know, I mean, we've just got to be a little careful.
You could go more foreign.
Well, he didn't try that.
There is a, I think, isn't it in the ordinance with the type of, like, different areas?
Right. I don't know if there really is or not.
We've got a weed ordinance.
Right. But that's more of a noxious weed ordinance. And it changes, being, this is an outlaw.
Exactly.
This is not a buildable lot, this is an outlaw.
Right. And what do you do with the rest, I mean, is it all like that?
And I guess per note in here, it says it's all a part of the, there's a letter in here that states it's all part of the floodplain already, so you'd be going in and disrupting things that are in the floodplain.
Right. But is this? This one is, is this being singled out? Are the rest of the lots in the same manner? I mean, I haven't seen it. I mean, I've got one photo to look at.
Well, the only complaint is with respect to this outlaw. Yeah.
From a planning's own perspective, I'd be encouraging the council not to take any action, you know, on this.
I agree.
Because I think there's, it's a unique situation, we don't have.
There's not enough information.
There's not enough in our ordinances already that we're in the process of rewriting that addresses this type of situation. And unfortunately, I mean, we're in that position. Now, we could take the hard line and say, the ordinance says this, we have to comply, but I, you know, when I do that, the common sense tends to go off the window.
Well, and I would be willing to bet that if we did that, we would probably run ourselves into a situation with the D N R and/or FEMA, just simply because of flood areas and things that you can do and you can't do in flood areas. There's a fifty-foot. So. Man, we're supposed to be in place, I mean, waterways, waterways. I don't believe that's movable.
You're not supposed to? Nope? I don't even like pastures within fifty feet.
Right. I mean, there is a lot of things that could enter into this situation.
I think we'd be opening a large can of worms.
And even though this is in regards to just one outlaw, I wouldn't want to be making a decision on one outlaw when there's a pile of outlots. You know, if we're gonna make a decision, it should be a decision for that entire area. You know, because we've already put ourselves into, into a situation where we've got several outlots. You know, if we're gonna say one needs to be taken care of a certain way, we need to be making sure that they're all being, you know. And with that, I think having a new flood map, and we could all be old and gray and gone by the time FEMA gets around to kicking out their next flood map. And the current flood maps are terrible, so it's a kind of a crapshoot as to exactly where those lines fall. You know, so I don't know if it's a conversation with the D N R at that point to.
It would be.
To figure out, you know, where and what their suggestions would be as far as maintaining those flood areas.
Nancy, has Laura provided any insight based on H K's experience with something like this?
She, her findings are the same as what we found.
Well, yeah, but she's going according, she's looking at the ordinance and looking at the complaints. But I'm looking at these type of situations in general.
I hadn't heard any suggestions from her, which is why I sent her a whole list of, we could try this, this, and this. Because there are some other cities that have some kind of, maybe some really good ways to deal with it. But I don't want to get into that detailed knowledge.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna definitely try and address this. So, if I can summarize, you're kind of saying, please correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying, due to the nature of this outlaw, the weeds and tall grasses are not considered a nuisance? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Unless they're noxious weeds.
Yep.
Well, other than noxious weeds, yes.
Right.
Okay, well, we'll look for that our direction then. So, thank you, thank you very much for considering it. And it's a, it's a unique situation, so, thank you.
As I understand from before the meeting, item number six has already been addressed?
Yes.
Do we need anything on the record indicating what was done, how it was done, or?
Well, the measurements are asked for the preliminary plat.
Anyone have any other business they'd like to discuss? Any update on Mr. Wilker and his circumstances?
How bad hurt?
Nothing that can be shared.
I'm not trying to pry.
Turn, turn stand, no.
We're all a little involved in that conversation. If there is nothing else, gentlemen, I'm happy to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under the circumstances, do we want to entertain public comment?
You rail.